Father be with them in the split-second decisions that they often have to make. Lord, we pray for the decisions that the council makes here today, that they are pleasing to you and the people of Punta Gorda. Psalm 33:12, blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. And all thy people said, Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty of each other, equal.
Thank you, Carlo. Okay, does anyone have any changes to the agenda or everything okay the way it's written? All right. We'll begin today with our first award, which is a service award for five years of service. And I'm going to go down to the podium, so excuse me one second. I'm pleased to give this award for five years of service to Cassandra Price.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
There you are.
Awesome.
We want to get a picture for you.
Thank you. Yep. Cassandra has been with the city for five years now in procurement. She, her initial background was with temporary staffing. She came to the city, and I remember her at her interview. She was very bubbly and lighthearted and eager to get to work. So Cassandra started as an administrative assistant in procurement, and during her journey in procurement, she has maintained her eagerness and her engaging personality. She entered our progression program, and by completing educational courses through the National Procurement Association and on-the-job training, she excelled to the assistant buyer. Then again, entering again the progression program, she excelled to a buyer one and is now a buyer two. So we look forward to her progressing to a senior purchasing agent. On a personal note, Cassandra fosters dogs until a forever home can be found for them, and she also volunteers with a nonprofit organization that, and she processes the applications in order to find the dogs their forever companion. So we do appreciate, truly value her, and we certainly appreciate her being with the city.
Well, everyone thinks procurement spends money, but what they really do is keep us, they keep us from spending money that we don't have to spend unnecessarily. It's a very important job, and we appreciate the work you've done over five years. And I hear she has a really tough boss, so.
Indeed, indeed. Can we move this podium down a little bit? This is like, I feel like I'm standing behind a 25-foot building. Okay, we now have four proclamations, and the first one is in honor of National Prayer Day, and Vice Mayor Lockhart is going to read this one.
Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda. Whereas prayer is regarded by millions as the most important utterance of humankind for its benefit, throughout our history, Americans of many religions and belief systems have turned to prayer for strength, hope, and guidance. Prayer has nourished countless souls and powered moral movements. And whereas the First Amendment to our Constitution protects the rights of free speech and religious liberty, including the right of all Americans to pray, these freedoms have helped us to create and sustain a national nation of remarkable religious vitality and diversity across the generations. And whereas the National Day of Prayer is a time set aside for Americans to pray and reaffirm the spiritual principles upon which our nation was founded. And whereas this year's theme is "Pray fervently in righteousness in much avail." And whereas on May 4th, 2023, people will unite in prayer, each according to their own faith and tradition, to show gratitude for many blessings and freedoms and to ask for continued wisdom, strength, and protection as we chart a course for the future. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda does hereby proclaim May 4th, 2023, as National Day of Prayer and invites all citizens to observe this day in ways appropriate to its importance and significance. Passed and duly adopted, a regular session this third day of May, 2023, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, signed Lynn R. Matthews, Mayor, and accepting is Pastor Bob Carlson.
Well, on behalf of the faith community, I want to thank the City Council and all who are involved for this proclamation and recognizing the need for prayer. I, I think in our day, with all the difficulties that we're going through, not only in the nation but around the world, most people would say it's time to pray. I, I was thinking of a comedian I heard back in the 70s who said when he was in Vietnam, there was another Marine who carried with him a cross, a Star of David, let's see, a Buddha, and a rabbit's foot. He wanted to cover all the bases. Okay, well, my God, my God is the God of the Bible, and I trust Him, but I'm so thankful that in America, we have freedom of religion, freedom of all religions, and that is a good thing. We know Patrick Henry is the one who said, "Give me liberty or give me death," but to paraphrase another statement he made, he said that though America was founded primarily by Christians, we have given freedom to all people and for their faith. And I'm so thankful for that. So I call on you, whoever you are, to join us tomorrow on this National Day of Prayer while millions of people across America will be praying for America. And that is to be, if I understand correctly, is it still in front of the City Hall annex?
Yes, sir.
I saw the construction there. I went there first. I wasn't thinking. And, but if you would come at noon tomorrow, I think you'll appreciate it and join in solidarity with others in the community. Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation in honor of Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day, and it is my honor to present this proclamation. Proclamation for the City of Punta Gorda, Florida. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week to pay tribute to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas, I'm getting invaded. And whereas the members of Florida law enforcement agencies play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our citizens, and whereas Florida police departments have grown to be modern and scientific law enforcement agencies which unceasingly provide a vital public service. And whereas during Police Week, let us demonstrate our appreciation for the unsung heroes who nobly wear the badge and put their lives at risk to protect people each and every day. Let us honor the brave officers whose bright futures were cut short in the line of duty. Let us come together to help police be the partners and protectors our communities and our nation need for a safer, more just America. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda does hereby proclaim the week of May 15 to 19, 2023, as Police Week and further proclaims May 15, 2023, as Peace Officers Memorial Day and encourages residents to participate in celebrations and ceremonies appropriate to honor these selfless public servants who put themselves in harm's way to keep us safe every day. Passed and duly adopted, in regular session this third day of May, 2023, signed Lynn R. Matthews, Mayor. And as you can see, a lot of our folks in blue are present to receive, and we're very, very blessed to have them all on our team. Thank you for all that you do for the city. And Chief Davis?
And as you could hear, we have another one of our officers up there in brown that's very excited to see all this happen.
If you don't understand that reference, chances are service dog. Actually, therapy dog.
Good morning, everybody. Chief Pam Davis, Punta Gorda Police Department. First of all, thank you, City Council, for recognizing this, this big week for us. It's truly an honor that you guys presented this proclamation. The Punta Gorda Police Department feels very blessed that we have such a great community that supports us. The whole county, the city are very supportive of law enforcement. We really appreciate it. It's an absolute honor to serve this city. National Police Week is going to be May 15th through the 21st this year, and it's obviously a time for us to reflect and remember those that lost their lives in service to their community. And, you know, this job, we do it because it's a calling, so it's difficult, but we, we have a passion for it. A special note, the Charlotte County Sheriff's Office, FOP, will be having their fall officer memorial ceremony on May 18th at 6:00 PM at the William R. Gaines Park, and it's especially difficult this year because of the loss of Deputy Christopher Taylor, so they're going to honor his memory. And I just want to say again, thank you, thank you to our citizens, and thank you, City Council, for always being supportive, and City Manager Murray for the, the great support we feel here in this city. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have a proclamation in honor of Hibiscus Day, and Councilmember Dryberg, you are up.
Can you get to the resolution for the budget thing? Can you just read that by title? Yeah. And then there's not really a presentation, and I'm going to say a couple words.
Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda. Whereas the City of Punta Gorda has proclaimed itself to be the Hibiscus City since 1926, when plantings were provided throughout the city. And whereas the city adopted Resolution 2177-00 on March the 1st, 2000, reaffirming that delegation, dedication and declaring itself to be the City of Hibiscus. And whereas Harry Golding made Punta Gorda his home and was known by many for his world-class, award-winning hybrid hibiscus plants, growing some 60,000, think about that, 60,000 varieties of hibiscus over 60 years. He won many accolades for his awards, including the prestigious American Hibiscus Society Best in the World category five times. Whereas to continue the effort to highlight the city's designation, the 19th Annual Hibiscus Festival be held in Gilcrest Park from May the 5th, 2023 through May 7th, 2023, and included a Friday evening concert unveiling of the King and Queen Hibiscus on Saturday, and plant sales and continuous music on Saturday, Sunday, as well as food vendors and other activities. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda Florida does hereby proclaim May 6, 2023, as Hibiscus Day and encourages all residents to plant hibiscus to beautify the city and continue the tradition which began many years ago. Passed and duly adopted, in regular session, third day of May, 2023, City of Punta Gorda, Lynn R. Matthews, Mayor. And here to accept it is Diane Munson.
I want to thank everybody for offering this, and if you have the Hibiscus, that's going to be a couple hours, all of the ladies. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, conquistadors, please report for duty. This one's going to require suiting up, and it's also going to require that we have some interaction from the audience. So whenever you see me go like this, I want you to go, "Hey!" Please note, this was, was handcrafted just for me, and it's my duty to, to wear this in honor of the conquistador landing event. Okay, here we have a proclamation for the City of Punta Gorda, Florida. Come on, you can do better than that. Whereas the Royal Order of the Juan Ponce de Leon Conquistadors was formed in 1979 to commemorate and perpetuate the memory of Juan Ponce de Leon.
Hey!
His discovery of Florida and of Charlotte Harbor in 1513.
Hey!
His documented first attempt to establish a European colony in America on Charlotte Harbor in 1521.
Hey!
And his impact on the establishment of the City of Punta Gorda.
Hey!
And whereas the Ponce de Leon Conquistadors have since visited Palencia, Spain, a major city nearby to San Terravas de Campos, the place where Juan Ponce de Leon was born.
Woo!
And San Juan, Puerto Rico, where he served as governor not only of Puerto Rico but of land he named La Florida, thereby strengthening the ties between Punta Gorda and its sister cities.
Woo!
And whereas the people of the City of Punta Gorda wish to show their appreciation and support to the Ponce de Leon Conquistadors for their efforts in commemorating the memory of Juan Ponce de Leon through their recreation of his landing in Charlotte Harbor.
Hey!
Their efforts at promoting cultural exchanges.
Hey!
Their support of local organizations and charities.
Hey!
Their dedication to history and the zeal with which they carry out their activities.
Woo!
Sorry, this is really fun. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda Florida does hereby proclaim May 13, 2023, as Juan Ponce de Leon Conquistador Day.
Hey!
In the City of Punta Gorda, encouraging all citizens to join in paying tribute on this day. Passed and duly adopted, in regular session this third day of May, 2023, signed Lynn R. Matthews, Mayor.
Hey!
And accepting our guys from the conquistadors. Congratulations. Welcome to say it for you.
All right, my name is Phil Harris. I have the honor of being the 2023 Ponce, and we'd hope to see you all out there on the 13th at the Sheridan Four Points, and we're going to do our annual recreation of Ponce de Leon Landing in Charlotte Harbor. I'd like to have our historian Lindsay give you a little bit of a history lesson on Ponce de Leon.
Good morning. Most of what was, we tell about the history is really mentioned in, in the proclamation, but this organization is 44 years old this year. We started, matter of fact, with Don Donaldson and some of the founders of Fisherman's Village. We started in 1979, and we've continued on since then and have annually, you know, commemorated the, the, the landing and discovery of Florida in 1513. And we used to do it at Fisherman's Village. It was really a Chamber of Commerce type of event to promote the town because nothing was going on in Punta Gorda in 1979. And so they were trying to get the village going and, and going, and going well. Today, we don't have to do much. They come automatically to the village, of course. But, you know, our organization has been very involved in the community, doing a lot of things, and especially in the Capitol. We've been to the Capitol, have been participating in parades when the governors have been inaugurated. We've been in, you know, some of the famous parades, of course, you know, the Fort Myers Parade of Lights, and, and of course, the, the one on Tampa Bay, which is the biggest, probably the largest parade in the nation, which is the one they have up there, and it's, it's an immense parade. But anyway, we do a lot for the community. We volunteer, we've done a lot of things, such as helping the boys out at Vermont, and that's just one of the small things, and we give scholarships. As a matter of fact, we're, this week, we start giving three scholarships to our high school graduates, basically $1,000 each, and it's a, a great event. And we show up in, in these uniforms, which gets, gets everybody excited. So anyway, but thank you all for, thank you for the proclamation, and come see us next Saturday at 1 o'clock at the Four Points Hotel here in Punta Gorda for our landing and commemoration. Thank you all.
Do you get to keep the helmet?
Oh, this is mine.
Oh, okay.
Especially they, they had, they made one for me and for Nancy Preb.
Nice.
So I have to stow it away until I go to the next proclamation.
Thanks for playing along, that's always fun. Okay. Before we open the floor for public comment, I do have some housekeeping notes I would like to read into the record. As I already mentioned, please silence all personal devices as this meeting is being recorded, and it disrupts the proceedings when phones go off during the meeting. There is a code of conduct in the council chambers, and it is up on the screen in front of you. Members of the public should familiarize themselves with the rules on the large screen. Members of the public who wish to address council should use the guest podium at the center of the room. The podium to the right of the stage is for staff and applicant presentations only. Speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name for the record. Each person will have three minutes to speak, and sharing minutes is not permitted. Speakers are to direct all comments to the City Council, not the audience or any one individual council member. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience is not permitted. When there are many individuals who wish to speak on a specific subject, speakers should try not to reiterate lengthy comments made by others to ensure an effective and efficient meeting. This ensures everyone has an opportunity to speak. Audience and speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. No applause, sidebar conversations, or booing before, during, or after any speakers. Please refrain from talking in the audience during the meeting as the meeting is being recorded. A copy of any supporting documents displayed during the meeting must be provided to the city clerk, and these documents become part of the permanent record. The citizen comments portion of the meeting is not intended to be a question and answer session. This is for citizen comments only. Council members should refrain from answering impromptu questions or debating issues with members of the public. With that, we will open up the floor for public comments. Come to the podium, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes on any subject.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm John Luster, resident of Punta Gorda and the president of Punta Gorda Charlotte Harbor Motors Alliance. I warn the alliance feel it's imperative that the day front center be rebuilt. While we do not oppose green space, we are opposed to the elimination of this most important asset of the community. This building, in the past and hopefully in the future, provided much-needed meeting space for many groups who serve Punta Gorda and the surrounding area. Punta Gorda is desperately short of the forceful locations for groups such as the IMCA and RDA to meet and conduct community activities and classes. We are a boating and waterfront community. We have visiting voters and residents who in many ways drive our economy. The new building will be a magnet for responsible voters to continue to visit our beautiful city. When reconstructed, the building should reflect the beauty and vibrance of our community. The time to begin the process of rebuilding this by the heart of our community is now. The Voters Alliance now is ready to part with the city and moving this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jeff Lustig here. Today I'd like to talk about what's going on in our court system, which is open to the public, and we're invited, let's you go and observe a trial.
Hi, I'm Jeff Lustig, and I'd like to invite you to go to our court system. It's, observers are allowed to watch a trial in progress, and one day you can watch a whole trial come on board. Today, 85 people will be arraigned at our county court, and the number one charge that they will face is driving without a valid license with knowledge that they were doing that. And you'd say to yourself, "Oh, my goodness, if this is happening every week, there are thousands of people who are driving without valid driver's licenses on the road." And you would think, "Well, where are they coming from, and how is this happening to all these people?" Well, one of the reasons this happens to people is because you, you go and you pay your insurance usually online with your credit card, and you're, we all know our credit card sometimes goes out of date, and for a day you may miss the payment for your insurance, and then the DMV cancels your license and suspends it. And there's a, it's called a rebuttable presumption of guilt that if they sent you a notice in the mail, you should have had knowledge that your driver's license was suspended. And if you get three of these in five years, your license is suspended for five years, and it's a felony. So I'm just, want to inform people that make sure that your insurance is kept up and that you don't have any liens or whatnot, and make sure, you can go online and check your DMV status, because you don't want to, because our Punta Gorda Police Department, it's a great job of entering in license plates through David and Elvis, I think that's always cute that those names are there, that, to see if, if your tag is up to date, and that gives them probable cause to pull you over and to, to, to interview you and to inform you that you have this problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please get in line and, and stand in the queue if you would please, so we can keep the meeting moving.
Well, good morning, City Council, City Attorney, City Administrator, and everybody in the chamber. My name's Tim Ritchie, and I'm a resident of Punta Gorda in Charlotte County. And I'm here today again to ask if you have written the letter to the city, to Charlotte County and De Soto County. About the $500,000 I requested for the City of Punta Gorda to have Brandon Moody start a sediment testing program. The other thing is, have you gotten in touch with County Attorney Knowlton and the City Attorney of Northport to discuss their letters, how they wrote and drafted the resolution supporting De Soto County? What a wonderful way to start the meeting about Christianity, freedom of religion, freedom of choice. It's what the greatness of America is. And then I hear a gentleman talking about boating and the Peace River. Now I want every one of you in this chamber today to understand, one, you can go to Facebook and visit March Against Mosaic, or you can go to Citizen Waters are, or you can go to Tim Ritchie's page. But the most valuable commodity we have in the City of Punta Gorda is the Mayaaca River, the Peace River, and Charlotte Harbor. And the faster each one of you understand that, and that that water is more valuable than any development, anything. Warren Buffett, Gates started buying up all of the water rates in this country and around this globe, starting in the 80s. Lastly, you know, I, it's really weird we're meeting here today. I thought we'd be back down at our convention center. I don't think we should be giving any money to John Lamar. And I hope all of you have learned a lesson from this, that we are not going to have any 100-foot-tall buildings in Fisherman's Village. We don't care who he sells it to, or if the city takes it back. We don't want that type of traffic here. It's not welcome. And this City Council represents the citizens of this city. Thank you. And I need those letters, and we need that money, and we need that program. Mosaic is harming our river every day, right now.
Thank you.
You mentioned, this isn't in my notes, but you mentioned Punta Gorda, Ponce de Leon Park, and, or Ponce de Leon, and I think right off the bat about the park. My mom went through the. My mom went through the progression of dementia, and that park was a lifesaver. We would drive over there at least five times a week, and if not, maybe more than that. And it was something that it took her mind off, and it opened her mind to something familiar, because she had done it with her husband when she was married to Woody. And we continued that tradition. And it was so helpful when you'd go through a tough day, whether you were the patient or the loving family member or the caregiver, to be able to unwind. And that's what Ponce de León Park did for me. So if there are any of you residents who are in that type of a situation, I strongly suggest you go there. It's a great place to go to see the sunsets. Allegiant Travel is going to be having its first-quarter earnings conference call today. I will be listening to it and see what the analyst's questions are. There's about ten different analysts that ask questions of John Redman. And to find out what the future may be with regard to sun seekers and perhaps the 1,200 employees that they plan to hire in a fairly relatively short period of time, if I was an investor, I'd want to know where they were going to get them from, and how well are they going to interview them and train them. But that will, that will be to be seen. Also, I'll be following about Allegiant Travel with regard to the airline and its, the Department of Transportation at the federal level, to see how that works through with regard to, will Viva Airiabuse also be able to have planes coming here and landing? They have, right now, category two planes, which are not up to the snuff of what we fly in our skies here. So we'll see how that one evolves. And the last thing I'd really like to talk about is when Ashley Chandler spoke at the last meeting, and Diane, her counterpart, Ashley is from drug-free Punta Gorda, and Diane was from drug-free Charlotte County. And both those gals, I got a boot out of it. It is worth everyone's time to go to their websites and take a look around and see what's on those sites. Not only will you learn things like who of the great people are on the board of directors for those two groups, but also you get a chance to see what they do with the rest, with the kids in our group.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address council on any issue? Seeing no one come forward, we will move on to, if there's anyone in the audience who has submitted a resume for a boarder committee seat that they would like to run for, please come forward and introduce yourself, and you will have three minutes. Okay, seeing no one come forward, we will adjourn as city council and reconvene as the Community Redevelopment Agency. Okay, we will now go into session as Community Redevelopment Agency. First agenda item is citizen comments. If there are any residents that would like to comment on any of the agenda items for the CRA agenda, you may please come forward and introduce yourself, and you have three minutes. Just CRA agenda items. The other citizen comments are closed at this time. Okay, seeing no one. Mr. Murray, you are up.
Well, it seems like just last week we talked about this, because
We did.
We actually did. So I don't want to go over too much in detail that we just talked about when we look at our marina activity. You can see we still have the fourteen annual rentals and the one liveaboard from last month. It was a temporary liveaboard that really helps facilitate what's intended for the marina with the liveaboard and the submerged land lease permit. When we look at our pumpouts, you can see we had over 2,000 gallons that was pumped from eighty-nine vessels in April, and of course, that's 2,370 gallons that we help provide proper disposal for and help protect the waters of our harbor. So when we look at our projects, what I really wanted to do was just highlight one, because we just talked about the others, and that is the Lashley Park splash pad. That says vendor agreements are still being negotiated, and I just wanted to make everyone aware that we're looking at the licensing requirements and things that we would need to finalize this type of agreement, to see if we can move forward with that. So one way or another, we'll either move forward with the contractor. If that doesn't work out, we'll still proceed with getting sources for construction of the splash pad. So film at eleven, so to speak. We're not quite there, but we are working on it. With that, what I would really like to do is talk a little bit about operations in the marina. The marina itself certainly has 144 slips. We have our mooring balls. We have a lot of things that are being worked on. And with that, we have a marina management company that takes care of operations of the marina on behalf of the city. We know we have a lot of things that are being worked on right now, and with that, a lot of things that need to be accomplished. When we look at the technology that's used, the reporting that's done, et cetera, it certainly falls to the dock master to make sure that we're kept informed and really manages that marina in an efficient and effective manner. So one of the things we also have there, of course, is our pumpout boat that we talked about. And many people ask, well, what does that boat do? Where does it do it? When does it do it? How does it do it? Why does it do it? And I thought it might be a good idea to not only just refresh some of the information on that, but also to introduce our new dock master that is now in the marina, and Gary's here, if you don't mind coming down, and let him talk a little bit about the operation of the marina, the operation of the pumpout boat. Gary's been with the marina, I think, almost a year?
Oh, a year and a half.
Year and a half? Okay, year and a half, time flies. I know when we had to move our offices over there, he was very helpful to everyone in making that happen and getting that to feel more like home and providing some support that we needed there. So as well as working in the marina in and around, we've seen him there for quite some time, and now taking the new position, we're very pleased to be able to work with him at the marina and looking forward to what he can do there. So with that, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and explaining a little about the pumpout boat, or anything else you'd like to say about the marina?
All right.
Anything good you want to say about us as well?
I hope we have a great working relationship from now on. I'm ready for that. My name is Gary Pischka. I am the new dock master for Lashley Park Marina. This is actually my seventh day as the official dock master. City manager's office asked me to come down and just speak a little bit about the pumpout boat and where it goes and what it does. Our pumpout boat runs Mondays and Thursdays, starts at 8:30 in the morning in the marina, and it goes till roughly 1:00. The route it takes is, it does Lashley Park Marina first, all the 144 slips, goes to our stationary pumpout station and empties. Then it goes to our mooring field, then it goes to Gilcrest Park, which is Punta Gorda Waterfront, goes down to Ponce de León Park Channel, goes down to Alligator Creek, then it goes all the way back over to Grassy Point, which is the Port Charlotte Canal System Channel, and then back to our pumpout station and empties again. Gets put back in the stall, gets rented down, the motor gets flushed out, and it gets washed once a week. Try to keep it up, keep it serviced every year. And that's, does about 21-mile round trip every Monday and Thursday, eight to 21 boats a day, and roughly 200 to 500 gallons per day that's taken out of the, out of the area.
Thank you, welcome.
All right, thank you very much.
Mayor, quick question.
Yes.
Do the boats request the service, or do they just go from boat to boat to boat?
They can request the service, especially the ones out in the harbor somewhere. They can either hail, the boat's name is SS Clearhead, they can hail them on Channel 16, or they can call any time during the day or prior days to the office, and we can schedule a pumpout at a certain time, whenever they need. Yep.
And just for the record, the pumpout boat does not go through the canals correctly?
No, it has to stay out in the main channels, yes. Yep.
Yeah, that's part of the grant agreement with the county.
Yes, yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for, okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I know this isn't the first job he's had or the first time around the block, so we're pleased to have his level of experience coming back into the marina and look forward to working with him as the dock master. So the SS Clearhead and the subsequent agreement with the funding that we get, which is one of the things on the consent agenda that verifies, we use that funding as anticipated. We don't charge for that service to each individual boater, which is one of the reasons that we have to stay in the channel and basically protecting Charlotte Harbor. And we're very pleased to be able to provide that service and allow people to use that and even encourage that, because they don't have to pay a large amount to have their facilities pumped and disposed of. So that's a very good thing. That's really all I have for CRA at this point.
Any questions for Mr. Murray?
Be back next month and more of the same.
No questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, the next agenda item is the CRA board member vacancy. As everyone knows, Mr. Council has resigned his seat because he's relocating up north, and there is either an opportunity to fill that vacant seat or leave it vacant. And we'd like to get some conversation from the council or from the commissioners. Go ahead.
Well, I had stated before that I don't think it's necessary to fill it at this time. I know that previously there was a conversation with, a vote could end in a tie. I guess my rebuttal is realistically, any vote could end in a tie if we had a council member missing, you know, for example, it would just, it would just, the vote would just die. So I don't think it's necessary at this point, considering we're going to try to sunset it in 2024.
Anyone else?
I agree.
Okay, consensus to leave the seat vacant?
Yes.
Okay, and we, we'll need to let the county know that, because I believe they've already considered or have done advertising? So, okay. So you have our decision that we will leave that seat vacant at this time. Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner comments? Mr. Kuharsky?
No comments.
Mr. Drybur?
Nothing.
Mr. Butler?
Just one, the
Put your mic on.
Just one, I reviewed the ordinance that was presented at the last city council meeting that are related to included activities taking place at Veterans Park. And, you know, what that ordinance reads and what actually is taking place around, in and around the wall, especially during days where there are ceremonies, probably some inconsistencies. So I'm just suggesting if that, if there is a movement to move forward with that ordinance, that perhaps we approach the foundation of the wall committee to take a look at that, to see if there might be some recommendations for some changes about what we do and don't do at the wall, especially as it relates to military-themed ceremonies.
Just to further that, at this point, of course, our ordinance has a specific defined area that generally prohibits activities at the wall, and even microphones, speakers, different things, electronic devices that are used in ceremonies in the gazebo and plaza are to be directed away from the wall. It's to remain a solemn-type location for reflection. Given that the gazebo is out of service and will be for quite some time, there can be an exception for a specific event, such as Memorial Day coming up, for example, with the Veterans Council, and that's actually on the agenda for the 17th for city council to discuss.
Okay. Ms. Luckhart?
No.
Mrs. Peterman?
Thank you. Greg, is this an appropriate time to ask about the dinghy docks, which are disintegrating before our eyes?
Well, is it ever an appropriate time? Yes, yes, it is. The dinghy docks, we did receive emails, and if you go over, you can see some are taped off, because, especially with the storm, things have broken loose, and they are in bad shape at this point. We're discouraging a lot of the use there. At the same time, we have boats that are moored right off Gilcrest Park that are still bringing dinghies in so that they can resupply, et cetera, especially if they're liveaboard. So our engineering department has that email and information, and we'll be going over there again. Of course, it's already taped off, but this week, to see if there's additional measures that can be taken to ensure the safety and prevent any liability that we may have.
Thank you.
Okay. And I have no comments, so therefore, we are adjourned as CRA, and we will reconvene as city council. Thank you. Okay, we are back in session as city council. We have no public hearings today. We do have one resolution.
Yes, this is a resolution which I'll read by title only. A resolution of the city council of the city of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2022, by providing for supplemental appropriations in amounts identified in Exhibit A, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
And just one, if I could just further that a little bit, you can see that three of the transfers that we have in here, the use and source are law enforcement grants that were approved at the last meeting. So those three are just transferring that amount of money that you've already agreed to into the budget. The next is a $60,000 transfer that's from the reserves in our building department. Of course, our building fund reserves are separate than our general operational funds or our general fund reserve. They're basically an enterprise fund on their own. So that $60,000 will be used in a subsequent agenda item that you'll be discussing today, if approved, to continue contractual services for additional plan review and inspection to help handle the amount of permits that we've had in and the amount of inspections, and of course, plan reviews, even if roof material changes that we've had to provide post-hurricane, and it's certainly been a large challenge. And when we're able to bring in contractual services to help supplement what we have on staff, that helps substantially in the turnaround times at our residency. So that's the $60,000 that's in there. That's the four items, the three grants and the 60,000. 60,000 to be discussed in a later agenda item. And if there's any additional questions, Kristen will be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Move to approve?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and two seconds to approve the resolution for the budget amendments. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next is a consent agenda. This consists of the invoice of Allen Norton in blue, the resolution with the police department and the Department of Law, Florida Department of Law Enforcement, and the pumpout boat agreement. Anyone wish to pull anything? Okay, then we need a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is the award of amendment number eight to provide construction services for the wastewater treatment plant improvements to CDM Smith of Fort Myers, Florida.
Good morning, Anne Heinen Precurement, for the record. This amendment is number eight for the authorization for the master agreement that was initially approved in 2018. The master agreement was start, to start the process for the wastewater treatment works improvement. We have completed the design. The CMAR has been brought on board. We have the GMP, which is the guaranteed maximum. So the next item in the, in the progress of the improvements would be to have the agreement negotiated for the engineer of record services, which would provide a review of the monthly CMAR's application for payment, monitoring the construction schedule, progress meetings, project management, answer any requests for information inquiries from the contractor and the subcontractors, substantial and final completion, startup tasks for the improvements, and final completion, which includes certifying with FDEP to place the improvements into operation. The total construction timeframe is 42 months, and the total amount for these services, which are a combination of lump sum and not-to-exceed tasks, is $3,488,591. Staff is recommending award of amendment number eight to CDM Smith of Fort Myers, Florida.
And if I may, we, I'm sorry, was someone?
That's okay, go ahead.
Just to add for information, we did just on May 1st receive a letter from Florida Department of Environmental Protection. They authorized us and approved our award of the contract for $70,731,689 to proceed with the wastewater treatment plant. We have that authorization from state revolving loan fund, so that's another big milestone in getting our project moving. And if you just do the simple math, 3,004 out of a $70 million contract, you can see our construction management services are reasonable in the negotiated prices. And of course, this is a master agreement that we're amending based on prices that have been agreed to and submitted during the bid. have been agreed to and submitted during the bid so that we can move forward with the whole project. So that $70 million award and approval from the state is a big one that approves the plan specifications and award to a contractor. And this then facilitates that by having construction services.
Just for the record, for the quick question. So this is improvements, this is not an expanding project, correct?
This is the wastewater treatment expansion project.
So this is for an expansion project?
Yes.
Expansion is not capacity expansion. I think that's what you're asking.
That's actually what I was trying, yeah.
Yep. It's not expanding capacity. It's not growth-related. It is the same capacity at the end of the day that it is at the beginning of the day. We actually have milestones that we have to hit with the state to identify how much flow comes into the plant, when capacity expansion may be necessary. What this project does is completely reconfigure the plant because the amount of flow with the peaking factors we have today cannot be handled through the plant so that we can process it and meet our state permit. And of course, that's a water quality issue. What we have to do is divert a lot of that flow into holding retention ponds until the flow then recedes to a point where we can reprocess it back through the plant. Our hydraulic capacities on the clarifiers, all the, those things that were originally designed decades ago are something that need to be completely updated so our plant meets current standards and can process that material even to a higher standard than is currently required by the state. But we know additional standards are coming for water quality. Once we do that, that gives us an opportunity to then go back and work on our infrastructure and the system, try to replace some of the aging pipes that utilities is now working on, help bring those peaking factors down so that at some point in the future, when this debt is largely paid off, if we do need to expand for capacity, we then have the capability to do that at a much lower cost and in a separate debt issue. And so once this debt is essentially secured and we have our system back in shape to where those peaking factors are lower and the plant can handle more. So this itself is not an expansion for capacity.
Thank you.
What he said.
That's actually the short answer that utilities gave me.
Okay. Any discussion further on this?
Move to approve award of amendment number eight?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the amendment number eight for construction services for the wastewater treatment plant improvements. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have approval to continue piggyback agreement with CAP Government, Inc. for plans of review and inspection services.
Good morning again. Anne Heinen, for the record, procurement. As previously stated, prior to Hurricane Ian, due to retirements of existing personnel, staff requested, due to the labor shortages and increase of permit requests and inspections, at that time, staff requested to piggyback the services of CAP Government, which includes plans review, inspections, and other type of services for the building department. Shortly after that, the community experienced Hurricane Ian, and there was a need for critical services during that time. Staff was able to utilize the services of this piggyback contract to perform the inspections the city immediately needed after the hurricane. The inspections were completed in a relatively short amount of time, and the total cost was $22,220. The initial approval was under the city manager's authority at that time for professional services with a maximum of $50,000 for that fiscal year particularly. Those services, the critical services needed during Hurricane Ian, reduced that budget balance of the $50,000. So we're coming to City Council to request because the need is still in place after Hurricane Ian, inspections and plans reviews have increased significantly since the hurricane. So staff is requesting the approval to utilize this contract on an as-needed basis moving forward. We're estimating services needed to bring us to the end of the fiscal year is approximately $60,000. Staff is recommending approval to continue the piggyback agreement with CAP Government on an as-needed basis.
Questions?
So are we subcontracting out individual projects, individual inspections, or is this an individual that we bring onboard that we're?
These are services that are utilized with a contract. CAP Government has the contracted services with different individuals through that contract and we utilize them. So it's basically... Kathy, are they subcontractors under CAP? They're employees of CAP.
Yep. So what this does is we had positioned ourselves even prior to Hurricane Ian, knowing that if we had a spike in our permit requirements, that we can't just immediately hire employees, nor do we want to, to handle that peak in permit requirements, just like infrastructure. We don't want to have a spike in our budget one year when we could smooth that out so that we have consistent costs throughout our performance. So with this, we positioned ourselves with a piggyback on another municipality in the state of Florida so that we had those inspections and plan review services to handle any spike in permit requirements. Soon after that, we got Hurricane Ian, hence the spike. And that is for a company to provide whatever number of individuals is necessary as their employees to handle our volume load. So it's not per project or per any one specific thing. It's to handle the total volume that we have, especially in plan review, not any commercial, but rebuilding roofs, everything else that we have to have, and then the subsequent inspections. And what we've seen is, of course, we had an initial spike. And of course, that smoothed out somewhat. We've seen another spike because now people were getting insurance payments back and materials are starting to come in. So we see another spike in permit requirements, plan review, inspection. So in order to maintain that, that, you know, hopefully three to five days less than a week that we can turn things around, in many cases, we still have to have the contracted employees onboard so that they can handle that excess load that our normal city employees are unable to handle.
So we're basically outsourcing, is what this is? And is this, these are inspectors, not supervisors, or?
These are inspectors and plan reviewers, not supervisors.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, one of them's a supervisor, right? Can we bring in an actual? Not under this contract. Not under this contract? No, this has nothing to do with that. Okay.
We need a motion.
Move to approve 8B, approval to continue piggyback agreement?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Agenda Item 8B, the approval to continue the piggyback agreement with CAP Government. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have discussion on speed limit signs to be added to Akia Stah Drive. Captain Narra.
Good morning. Captain Norm Narra, Punta Gorda Police Department. Recently, we've been receiving a lot of complaints and references to speeders on Akia Stah. During our enforcement measures, we've talked to the citizens and a majority of them don't realize that it's 40 mi, that it's 30 miles an hour. They believe it's 40, or they don't know the speed limit. So I went there and I, I checked out all the signs and assessed it. And we currently...
When you say you talked to citizens, do you mean you pulled the member?
Yes, yes. I didn't. The officers did. And during our interaction, you know, it's, it's one of those things, you know, do you realize you were speeding and, and do you notice the speed limit is 30 miles an hour?
Sorry. It's just a different way to say it.
It's a polite way of saying someone got pulled over. Excuse me. So currently, when you're traveling westbound, we have, boy, is it not going to the next page?
Yeah, the side area should do it, or there's a little clicker beside it.
Oh, okay. Just the arrow key. That's it right there. No, we gotta go up right here. Number two. I apologize.
But it's not doing it up there. So somehow we've got this running twice. Looks like, yeah, we've got it running twice.
Sorry, technology's not my forte.
But talking to citizens is.
Yes, it is. So currently, we have three speed limit signs when you're traveling westbound. One's on Bayner Drive, one's on Vasco Street, and one's on Magdalena. We are recommending that we add two signs for westbound traffic, one at 1434 Akia Stah Drive and one at 1940 Akia Stah Drive. And the reasons why I chose those were the distance between the signs and where we're getting the general complaints from, the citizens in the area where they're living, saying what they're observing. Traveling eastbound, we only have two signs, one at 2429 Akia Stah Drive, which is close to Coronado, and one at Wood Thrust Drive. We are asking to add three for eastbound traffic, one at 1623 Akia Stah Drive, one across from 3129 Akia Stah Drive, and one at 331 Akia Stah Drive. Part of our research, we were, we looked into the National Committee on Uniform Traffic Control Device Study. And some of the considerations they say we need to take in effect are that speed limit signs need to be repeated more frequently in urban settings than in rural. And repetition of speed limit signs is important when the speed limit is less than that, the norm of, for the class of the road that is being signed. So if a road's designed to be a certain speed limit, but it becomes more residential and the speed limit's lowered, they recommend we put up, we repeat more signs in the area. They recommend that spacing of speed limit signs in a 40 mile per hour or lower zone should have a maximum spacing of approximately a quarter mile. By adding these six speed limit signs at the locations we mentioned, we will now have a total of six speed limit signs for westbound traffic and five speed limit signs for eastbound traffic. This will encompass Akia Stah Drive from US 41 to Coronado Drive, which is approximately 2.1 miles in length, which is within that quarter mile. It's a little more generous than the quarter mile that they were recommending, but I believe that would solve the problem.
So again, I'm sorry.
Well, go ahead. If you're gonna, I have a couple of comments and questions.
Some additional information, excuse me. Again, when speed limit signs are spaced widely as opposed to the quarter mile recommendations, and you do have a road that's very straight and long, like Akia Stah or Akia Stah, as some say, so regardless of how you say it, the speed limit's the same for whoever's traveling. But when you have that, people tend to have their speed creep up, which is where people say, oh, I didn't even realize, you know, I was going that fast on this stretch of road. So with speed limit signs that are spaced more frequently, it does give enforcement an opportunity to say, well, you just passed a speed limit sign. So it's not like you passed one two miles ago. Or if people were coming out of residential areas that now caused that speed limit to be lower, and they don't even have a sign that they passed until they pass an officer that wants to talk to them. So, you know, with this, we do have an opportunity then to ensure that people that are coming back and forth to our city or traveling that road do see speed limit signs more frequently. And it seems to have a better effect on controlling the speed itself. When they did a speed study in January, I believe it was,
Yes.
There was 33.2% of the vehicles that were going over 35 miles an hour, 35 miles an hour being five miles above, which is where you can start to ticket people if you so choose, I believe. So that 32% means that the 85th percentile certainly is not in play when you come to how many are obeying the speed limit. So we need to do something proactively to ensure that we inform and then subsequently and ultimately enforce the limits on the streets.
Mark?
So, yeah, I mean, the cost of these signs is insignificant and we have the funding to do that. But my, a couple of questions or comments. I think active enforcement is the most effective deterrent. I mean, you put, we could put up a sign every 50 feet, you know, and even if you have the flashing signs and you have the trailer with your speed is, I mean, after a while, people tend to just not see them. And, and so we could, again, no issue putting up signs, but active enforcement, you know, with consequences, you know, has to be, I, I think, if we're really going to do something here. But also, what is, and I'm not necessarily suggesting that the speed limit there is too low, but isn't there a situation where if, if a certain percentage of people in a, after we study it, are exceeding the limit, then that indicate, and safely, we're not having accidents, does that indicate that the speed limit on a given road is too low? And, and then, so before you answer that, I'll ask the next, next comment. Are we opening ourselves up? Because what about other streets? I mean, West Marion has got to be just as bad. I hear complaints of people live on Colony Point, people racing down to the condos at the, or the, whatever at the end there. So are we setting in motion here, whatever we decide to do, are we setting in motion a whole series of cascade of actions, you know, on other streets? So go ahead.
Well, I have received over the last six years complaints on Marion, but few and far between. Our biggest complaints right now as far as speed is Akia Stah Drive and Burnstone Road. We have been doing numerous overtime details due to staffing for speed enforcement. We did one in earlier this year on Akia Stah. Now, I'm, we've transferred it to Burnstone Road. We're going to be going back to Akia Stah. And, you know, we, as recent as, yesterday, an officer did, did one after his shift. As far as the speed limit, it's, it's, from all my understanding, it's that 85 percentile that the city manager had spoken about. That's how they generate. 85% of the traffic is traveling this speed. It's my understanding that's how they would generate what the speed limit should be. If we have a speed limit that's lower than what that 85 percentile is, then that's, that's my job to try to figure out how to resolve it. And there's, there's two ways based on, you know, 25 years of experience. It's, it's education, which includes information and enforcement. With one, you can't solve it. You need both. You gotta be able to say, as the city manager stated, you just passed that sign. It's kind of hard for an officer to write someone a ticket when they're, you know, like, well, I came off this street, there was, there was no signage. Unfortunately, today, it's not what, you know, we think you should know. It's what we can prove you know. And, and that's part of it. And that, the major reasons as to people speeding, other than, oh, I didn't realize I was going that fast, is I didn't know what the speed limit was, or I didn't realize it was only 30. So we're just trying to use that as education.
Someone in my group had asked, and I just wanted you to kind of weigh in on, the signs for me are completely fine, speed cushions. I know that it might have been brought up in the past. I know we have this one speed cushions there on, on Marion going towards the bridge. But is that something that you find might be a necessity down the road? Not necessarily Akia Stah, but would that help along with enforcement and signs and everything else?
Speed cushions obviously will help because it's going to force people to slow down. Whether it would cure the problem, I, I don't know because my only experience with speed cushions, other than in parking lots, are, is Marion Avenue. And, you know, it does slow people down before they go over that, the final bridge to, to get to Pond's Park. But, you know, I would, it, it's probable to believe that it would help slow people down because you're not going to take one of those speed cushions, you know, at a high rate of speed.
And there's two things with speed cushions. One, engineering criteria and uniform manual traffic control. One, engineering criteria and uniform manual traffic control where they determine they're most appropriate to use. And on a major thoroughfare such as that, just like stop signs. We could put stop signs at every intersection, and that definitely slows people down. But they're not recommended to do, recommended is education and enforcement. Even the ones on Marion, they had a specific purpose. And if you notice, they're right before the bridge, the Gary Wine Speed Homes. They, when they were doing a lot of construction out there, had concrete trucks that were going out. And they would get a little run for it to go up over that bridge. And when they did, concrete would slop out the back. So with the speed dumps, they had speed cushions, it says. They had to slow down so they could hit that because a big truck like that can't take a speed dump at a higher speed. And that prevented concrete from slopping out, so they've remained ever since. But you notice there's only that one location, even though there's multiple bridges. We have speed dumps there, so. Are they effective and do they work? Yes. And when you look at it from an engineering perspective, are there specific locations where they're recommended as opposed to the issues they may cause in others? That's also a yes.
I think there's also a huge concern about emergency vehicles having to get access. When you put speed dumps on a major road like that, it's gonna be a major problem for the fire truck, the fire trucks plural, and the ambulances that have to traverse that road every single day numerous times. And I'd be concerned about doing that. If you, if I were a patient in an ambulance, I certainly wouldn't wanna be on the receiving end of that speed bump. So that is a big concern, and that was part of my discussion with my group yesterday. Bill?
Yeah, and my group as well. But fire trucks and speed cushions don't work. There's no doubt about that. One of the things that did come up in our discussion, though, is it's interesting, and I don't know if it's lawful here within the city of Puntico or even in the state of Florida, but in other cities, they ha- it's, it's camera enforced and the sign flashes, tells you the speed. And then if you're over it by a certain amount, it takes a picture of the license plate, and then you get a ticket in the mail. And, and that might be something, if it works, we could try that as well.
We actually just researched that, and it seems like every city that had speed cameras have removed them. There's no, we could not find a law that prohibits us from doing it or allows us from doing it. The red light cameras are, are, there's still cities out there that do, and there are laws that govern the red light cameras. But as far as the, the speed cameras, we, we looked into it.
Chief Pam Davis, wanna go to the police department. And yes, that, for, I was thinking for the Burnstall Road issue, speed cameras would be the best solution. But we've reached out to all the departments that had the cameras in their cities. And for whatever reason, they said they've been, they pulled the cameras and they really couldn't give us a reason why. But it's like a civil infraction where you would charge the owner of the vehicle. So we're continuing to research that and maybe get some kind of a legal opinion as to why could we pursue that i- in the city. From where I was from, we had them, and they worked great, and they did slow people down.
Yeah, from where I'm from also.
Yes, from where you're from also.
The legislature allowed them in school zones specifically to start. And, you know, it was generally subcontracted out, especially in smaller municipalities, to third parties that would provide the cameras, maintain the cameras, maintain the certification of the cameras. There's a lot of work for each one of those to make any ticket valid.
And then the agencies will assign somebody to review. So you don't just arbitrarily issue the citations. The, the person at the agency reviews the footage and says, yes, that's correct, and certifies that it happened, and then it gets sent out.
Has to be reviewed by an officer.
Yes, an officer.
And then the third-party company gets a cut of the proceeds. But it's, there's a lot of work to installing, maintaining, and certifying these cameras, and then certifying the tickets subsequently. And in many cases, people put them in, it was a revenue generator. I mean, call it what it is because, you know, schools weren't in session and there was nothing going on, but those cameras were still working.
I had quite an animated discussion with my group yesterday about this subject. In fact, a lot more conversation than I expected. It ranged from anywhere from speed cushions to stop signs to cameras to too much signage. I think there was a, there was, there were a lot of people that said that the sign blight was gonna be an issue because years ago, all the stops, all the speed limit signs were removed. And if you remember,
I do.
I came to the police department a few years ago and, and met with, with Chief Davis and some of the, the officers there. And we talked about adding speed limit signs on some of the major artery roads because we, people that are not from here don't understand that the speed limit in Florida is thirty miles an hour unless otherwise stated. That's a state law. And so otherwise, there were no speed limit signs in the entire city, basically, except for forty-one and seventeen. So we had those added in a moderate level. And I'm, I'm just now concerned, if we're gonna put six more signs on Akia Stod, I think people are gonna go crazy. That's, that's a big concern to me. I don't disagree that we need some. I'm not sure six more is, is the answer. And I, I'm just really concerned that people are gonna complain about sign blight. So I don't know what the happy medium is, other than permanently putting an officer out there for enforcement. That's, you know, that's, unfortunately, enforcement is gonna be the, the natural fix for it because people do slow down when they see a police car. It's a fact. Even if it's a volunteer car, they see a car parked there, they're gonna slow down. And that's really the only thing, other than a camera, that, that might work in, in enforcing slower speed limits. So I don't know.
You know, it's interesting when you talk about that. Last night on Piper Road, up towards the airport, there was a, one of the trailers that has your speed is. And right beside it on that trailer had a speed limit sign. And right down the road within view of it was a sheriff's deputy. So he went by it and it said, your speed is fifty-two, and this is forty-five. And he was right there to make sure he talked to them about that. But again, education and enforcement, that's what that was.
And enforcement, we're trying everything we can in between calls for service to get our officers out there and do that. Like Captain alluded to, we have actually had to pay overtime to have people, so they can just sit there because it's too hard to run and you'd get, you can do it for ten minutes and then you have to leave, and then it just doesn't provide a consistent enforcement effort. It'd be wonderful one day to have a permanent traffic car that we could just, but, you know, we're just, we're trying.
Staffing is always the issue.
What we're working on.
Well, so what do you guys recommend we do?
I, I think that we go with the, the signs that they have requested and, and go from there.
Yep, go six more signs. Give it a shot.
Anybody else? No other comments? I'm on the fence about adding that many more signs, so I, I'm not sure how I feel about that.
Well, you could always take them down. I mean, if, if it becomes too burdensome, so I don't know. I mean, I think we should honor their request.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. So go ahead and add more signs. Pin sensors? Okay, all right.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's take a ten-minute break, please, and we'll be back again at ten.
Just to facilitate the discussion, we're at a point where we need to get our environmental people into the Bayfront Center so they can study and ensure there's no friable asbestos or asbestos at all, actually. That needs to be removed prior to demolition of the building. So, of course, once we get those reports back and we can get that out for bid, the building will be demolished either completely or at least down to the slab. And at that point, we'll need to know where we're going with that. What are we going to do for replacement of the space in a location and what are we going to do with that space that the building currently sits on? So with that, council had suggested a committee be formed of stakeholders to identify options and present back to council what the best option may be according to committee evaluation. And this discussion would basically formalize that committee, the members of that committee, and we could have staff then set up first meetings. The committee could determine what the procedures and processes that they want to use are and subsequently, in a fairly short timeframe, come back to council with some recommendations so that we can continue to move that forward. It might be a moot point. We're getting into hurricane season. That might demolish it for us, but at the same time, we still need to know what to put back. So this discussion would certainly formalize all that and allow us to move forward expeditiously.
Okay, since I'm the one that suggested this be on the agenda, obviously, my point of view, just to reiterate what I said at our last meeting, is that I do believe that the YMCA should be represented in the group. Learn to Sail should be represented in the group because they are currently on the lease of that building. And also, I believe the Historic Ponte Gorda Civic Association representing the neighborhood should be part of that group. I would, you know, I don't have, I feel strongly about the first three. As far as the other participants, I mean, Voters Alliance would be, you know, a reasonable choice, especially because they have submitted proposals in the past. We have the Dover Coal material. We have Team Ponte Gorda's work. But then I think the other two members, I mean, whomever. But again, the first three I feel strongly about.
Of course, the city.
Oh, well, obviously, the city. And do you have somebody in mind, Greg?
With urban design, we would provide someone that could help facilitate that.
So first of all, I'm glad to hear about the teardown progressing because that was actually the biggest comment that I had out of my advisors yesterday because we talked about that the last time we talked about the Bayfront Center. And to tear it down at least so it's not an eyesore or a danger while we're sorting this all out. So I'm glad to hear that that part is progressing. As far as the committee is concerned, you know, in my experience, you know, if you have a committee of any more than six people, it becomes ineffective. So I think the maximum number that we should have on the committee is six. My committee also suggested we absolutely had to have somebody, Joan from Urban Design, and so I would agree with that as well. And then I don't have any objection to any of the other names that you or organizations that you had mentioned, as long as we keep the maximum to six.
Totally agree.
I agree with all of that. And I have even put my name on the table is to sit in on the meetings and not necessarily vote on anything, but just to have somebody from city council there represented. But I agree with the names that you put forward or the organizations you put forward. I think that's critical to that facility because I think it's going to be. We need to, we need to have people involved who have used that building on a regular basis. I'm trying to get a copy of a list of all of the organizations that use the Bayfront Center and at what level they use them, when, where, however many hours per week, so that we have something to go on in order to plan forward. Because I think that's going to be also important. You know, we don't really, we know that the building was used quite a lot by a lot of different groups, but we don't have specific information on how, what amount of time those people used that building and what other purposes it served at the time that it was available. David?
It should go without saying, but I've been told that I've been exceptionally quiet today, so I'm going to say it anyway. Just a reminder that the committee would be subject to the sunshine law and the rules associated with that.
The one, actually, I didn't mention this because it didn't sound like I needed to, but the most, the first comment that my group made was city council should not be on the committee. That was their recommendation.
Well, ultimately, we're going to have to vote on whatever the committee recommends.
The committee, their feeling, their feeling was that nobody from city council should sit on the committee. The committee should bring the recommendation to council, then council can discuss it in a meeting and then vote on it. They were pretty adamant right out of the gate that nobody on council should be on it.
Also, David, I think it's somewhat analogous. If you remember the famous pickleball committee, which I chaired when we were tasked by city council to make recommendations on a solution.
Yes.
So we had meetings and they were not sunshine. They were not in public.
Well, we have to undo every decision that was made with respect to pickleball then. I'm joking, but, but, you know, this meeting, this meeting will, this meeting will need to be.
You heard him say he's joking, right?
This, this, this meeting would be required to be subject to the sunshine, meaning several things. First, the meetings should be noticed appropriately. So the public has the opportunity to attend and it's just because they will ultimately be making comments and recommendations to the city council, so they're part of the decision-making process.
He's officially appointed by the elected body as a representative.
Now, I don't recall what the circumstances were with respect to pickleball, and I'm sure we probably took a look at it at the time and made a determination that it fit into maybe one of the exceptions, but, but I.
I just know they were in public.
Don't want to revisit that because, but I, I just want to say with respect to this building, it, it, it would be subject to the sunshine law.
For clarification, what is the actual purpose of the committee? What is its existence for? Why is it there?
It's existing to make recommendations on the future use of the property, including if we were to build a building, I mean, is it possible, given where it's located? High velocity, surge, you know, stuff, you know, the actual construction cost, and then what would its use be and what would the budget be? I mean, I'm thinking it's not inexpensive.
It would be what facility do we need to construct and where?
Because we saw three renditions. I mean, basically, a double-wide, the Taj Mahal with turrets and flags, and then something in between. I mean, we've already, that, that's already, and I don't know if that came from Dover Coal or somewhere else, but, you know, that, that at least much work has been done already.
It did come from Dover Coal, and it was unanimously agreed upon at that time that it would not be the Taj Mahal, that it would be a functional, modern building that had basic needs accomplished without having it to be a really frou-frou fancy building. So, and we paid a lot of money for that study, by the way.
Is it not in our master plan that we were to replace the building?
It was a separate contract from the master plan. They did, they were hired for a separate.
They did some conceptual work on it. They had some alternatives on how to use the space. But again, my concern is I believe that site to rebuild is going to be very expensive, given where it's located.
I would suggest that we, we approach each of those organizations that you had mentioned and ask them to nominate someone, and then we can basically approve the committee at the next meeting. And even, even if we had more than six nominations, understanding that we're only going to limit it to six people, I think that would be the, the best next step and progress today.
If you're going to have a committee, you have to have an offsetting vote, so it'll either have to be five or seven.
Then I would say five.
So we would have YMCA, Learn to Sail, the Voters Alliance, city representative, and the fifth was the Civic Association.
Civic Association.
Yeah, that would be fine. So can the city reach out to those organizations and have them nominate somebody from their organization and have that on the next agenda?
Costs extra to get it next agenda, but yes.
That shouldn't be that big of a deal.
Certainly, we can.
No, I think we know three of them right off the bat, like, so.
Melissa, yes?
So I'm not, I don't know if five's enough. I think we might need to open it to seven. I think we allow maybe some suggestions via email come in, and I don't want to just, I don't want to exclude a group that maybe we're just not spitballing here because we're just kind of in the moment. The other thing is I would really want to make sure that whatever group is formed, that there is a point person. I find that any group you're involved, if there's not somebody that's heading it, and that might be Joan LeBeau or, you know, whoever the city rep is, just to make sure that, obviously, they're, they're organized, they're meeting. Mr. Levin, my question to you would be if it's going to be with the sunshine law, is it something where we need meeting space, that the public has to come? How would that work and how would that look?
Well, it, it would be open to the public, and of course, the meeting space would have to be adequate enough to accommodate whatever sizable group of the public would be anticipated. So, yes, we would need to have some accommodation for the meetings to be held.
I mean, it sounds like we're kind of going down the path of treating this almost like a, you know, I would say canal advisory group for lack of better thought right now, but basically, an appointed meeting that they're going to meet at a certain date, time, and, and have it advertised.
That's, that is correct. And the problem is that the government and sunshine law is pretty liberal in and of itself. And the attorney general, who has been pretty much given the responsibility for interpreting it for, for those that are affected by it, is, is very liberal. And the courts rely fairly heavily on the attorney general's opinions. So the, the biggest trap that a local government finds is try to do things efficiently, which then runs afoul of some of these very demanding requirements of the sunshine law. But, you know, there's a reason for it.
So if this is a public meeting, then there would be public comments section of every meeting, right?
Yes, with respect to, with respect to the agenda item.
Right, but the reason I'm asking that is because I'm hard over on five people, but in respect for, we don't want to exclude anybody. Anybody would have an opportunity to come and speak, but there's only five people making the decision. I think that's, that's an important factor, and people can, can, anybody can come and, and speak and have their opinions and their voices heard. So I, I, I think we need to look at that hard. The other thing we need to do is give them a specific charter with a specific end date. Because otherwise, they'll be meeting and meeting and meeting, and nothing is ever going to happen. It's got to be, you, you need to provide us, kind of like the Charter Review Committee.
That's my, that's what I would think it should run.
By this date, you need to provide the council with, you know, whatever.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned, but unable to really figure out why I'm so concerned. But the appropriateness of having staff member as a member of the committee, I think staff would be better served as a facilitator for the meeting as opposed to a voting member.
I could, I could agree to that. That would allow one more member. As long as staff has a role and staff wouldn't have a voting role. But, and I don't remember, but, but my committee, Joan was involved in something recently, and, and they were gushing about the quality of her contribution to whatever it was. I just don't recall what it was offhand. And they were very, that they need to be represented. So if she was represented, or if Urban Design was represented as an advisor and not as a, as a vote, that gives one more person, and we still get the input, so I'm fine with that.
Well, just to clarify, our intent is that we have someone from Urban Design, and probably not Joan. Joan's not around that long, which we'll say lovingly. But we have someone from Urban Design that'll facilitate the meeting. They would be the point person. They would coordinate the information from the committee. And our intent was that once the committee is formed, at the first meeting, they determine what their timeline would be, how long they think they would need to, need to evaluate the information they're given and reply back. Bring that back to council, and council could then approve, shorten, lengthen, whatever you wanted to do. Have a defined duration committee that, of course, is a public committee, and then provide all the associated requirements for that.
So you could have someone from city staff who would, again, be aware of, you know, sort of financial implications and all of that stuff, run the group. But the voting members would be from, you know, the constituents, shall we say, or the people who had been involved with the space in the past.
We could.
And then they could set a regular schedule, and I do believe it, it can't go on and on. In fact, it shouldn't have to go on and on.
I think it's important that we get this done soon, and we, and we get this on the, on the calendar so that we can move this along and be ready for whatever has to be voted on. And I think it probably needs to be done along with all of the rest of the master plan stuff that's in the works and when we adopt new codes and everything, because this can be folded into that as well. So I think it's, timing is of the essence to get this thing moving.
And our person certainly can facilitate it in ways such as we're going to have Kristen here today because she can tell you the financial implications, what we have, what it takes, et cetera. We're going to have Brian here for procurement to tell you the timeline that it's going to take to do what you're talking about. I mean, there's all those resources that can be coordinated through the point person.
Okay. All right. Well, you have the marching orders.
Do we want a fifth, another person in the voting membership of the group?
I do know that the, the woman that chairs the Boy Scouts group was interested also, and we may want to reach out to her because they use that facility a lot. That may be the, the fifth person. She had, she had reached out to me quite a while ago and asked if she could be part of the discussion when it came up.
So will we, we'd be looking at the Civic Association, the Voters Alliance, the YMCA, which would probably be Kim Montray would want to do it, the person who heads Learn to Sail and the Boy Scouts? Because it's some sort of historic group, isn't it?
Yeah, well, yeah, there's a lot of history there, and they, they even had a plaque on the wall in the building and that sort of thing. So I think, I think it would make a lot of sense to include them since they use the building a lot.
Can I just put out there that I, I believe, and I could be incorrect, but I think, again, going by the sketches and the Dover Coal and the different discussions that were going on, I think Team Ponte Gorda was pretty involved as well, really not?
She stole my thunder, so I was going to say, yes, that we, maybe if the Boy Scouts says they want to, we look toward Team Ponte Gorda.
What do you think? Consensus?
As long as we have, limit it to five. I mean, we could get, I, I think what we, we can get a dozen different recommendations, and then at the next meeting, we need to determine the five. And there's going to have to be opportunity cost. I mean, not everybody's going to have a seat at the table, but they can all have a voice. So I, I don't know that we need to determine the number. I'd, I'd get more than five nominations, and then we can decide at the next meeting.
I have no problem with that. That also gives opportunity for groups that may say, ah, I don't want to be involved.
Well, well, no, that's true. Hey, if there's, if there's anybody, if there's anybody that's listening and, and you would like to self-nominate.
Right.
Right there. Self-nominate. I mean, we have no problem looking at nominations, but we have to make a decision, and I think we have a way to go.
Okay. All right. You have enough information?
I do.
Okay. The next thing is the rental agreement for the Military Heritage Museum.
Just to, again, start this discussion, this was requested as an agenda item based on the April 19th issue where we did not meet at the Military Heritage Museum and subsequently canceled our board meetings for the following week based on the lease issue that was brought up by the owner. And then our relocation to the Convention Center for the one city council meeting.
So I had asked for this to be on the agenda. And so as everybody knows, on the morning of the 19th, there was an issue. It did not affect the city. The city has a valid lease with Military Heritage Museum, but there was another issue that I won't go into detail with. But because of that issue, it forced us to have to cancel our meeting. And our meetings are for a date, time, place certain, which was 9:00 AM. So because advertisement requirements and other requirements, we were forced to cancel that meeting because this other issue wasn't able to be worked out within a reasonable time. And it's not as if we could have just said, well, we'll come back at 1:00 and we'll, we'll meet from there. Then from April 19th to April 24th, the city actually waited to hear if that issue was worked out. And because of that, the city actually had to cancel six meetings within that time. And if you look at the lease and you do the math, basically, you can boil it down to, let's call it about $380 per meeting that had to be canceled. Again, because we had city business to finish, that was very important, we had to scramble to find another meeting location, which was the Event Center, which cost the city $3,700 just for one meeting. And it's not that we could just meet anywhere. We have AV requirements. We have different requirements. So in such a limited, short timeframe, that was our option. And we met there to try to conduct our city council business, but the other, the other meetings were canceled. So finally, we heard back from April 25th that the issue had been worked out and that we were going to be able to come back to the Military Heritage Museum to meet. I want to be very clear that it doesn't matter where we're meeting. It could be Costco. This, to me, is a business decision. It is not where we're meeting or anything of that nature. It's nothing personal. This is business. And the city, really, if you, if you calculate all the meetings that were canceled and what we had to spend, you know, you're basically looking at almost $5,900 that the city lost out within a week. Now, these are meetings that didn't actually have, the only one that actually showed up to meet were, was city council. So what I'm going to ask, obviously, after discussion, is going to be that I'm going to ask for that $3,700 plus, call it 380 for that other meeting that we, we weren't able to meet. So I know our lease is about $4,200 per month. That's what I'm going to be asking that we ask to have credited, give back however it wants to be worked out with the Military Heritage Museum.
Mark?
So, yeah, I did the math too, and I came up with pretty much the same numbers, but. but, and I have no problem asking them to do that. I have a feeling that they're gonna say, "It wasn't our fault, we, you could have met here, it was the city's choice not to, to hold the meeting." So I don't think that they're gonna just stroke a check. You, you could go back to the ultimate landlord and, and try there, but I think you'll, we'll receive the same, the same response. So I have no problem asking, but at the end of the day, it really, it's his business decision, and it comes down to what the city attorney would think, because you're gonna wind up having to sue to get the money, that's my point. They're not gonna write a check. If we want to get the 59, actually, it's 5,991 that I came up with, you're gonna have to sue. And so it's the city's attorney's opinion, how much is it gonna cost us to sue, and the fact that we are a public entity and we can't recover the legal fees, my guess is it's gonna cost us quite a bit more than the $6,000. So we could ask, but I don't think we can demand, and I don't think we're gonna be down the road of actually suing.
Mr. Karski, I think you're assuming a lot, I think you're, you're setting a presumption. At the end of the day, we have a good working relationship, and it wasn't. We couldn't just meet, we had advertising expenses, a date certain, this was not something where we literally could not meet. And it would be one thing if we had one meeting that was canceled and everything got resolved. It almost took a week to have this resolved. So I do think that you're, you know, assuming, and yes, we would have to look at the legality of it, but I would hope, from this meeting, that with the good relationship that we have, that maybe whomever would be in charge on that end would come and say, "You know what? You're right." And as a good faith, we were gonna give you that credit back, they can go to the ultimate person that was the one that created this mess. That's not for me to say. All I know is from a business point, we have a fiscal responsibility to account for all the money that the city spends.
I, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm, I'm, I said that we can ask, but I don't believe that, that they're gonna just stroke a check, and if we want to ask just to make a point, that's fine. We could have met in this building, it was our choice not to meet. We, 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 as a city, decided not to hold that meeting here that day, and then the subsequent meetings was just the cascade of that, but that meeting today was the fact that we chose not to meet, and I, I, I wouldn't give over the money, no matter how good a relationship I had, because I don't think that that would be a good business decision.
I, I have some comments I need to make at this point. First of all, you are absolutely correct, the city canceled the meeting, the museum did not cancel the meeting. Second of all, what you all don't know is that the initial agreement, I was not involved in the lease signing for this agreement for us to be here, but I, I was, kept abreast of what the conversation was with the city. The city is comped for all the city council meetings. It's not written into the, the lease agreement because the, the bid specs that were sent out for people who wanted to bid on the contract did not have an option for you to add that information into the bid. However, the agreement was that the city council meetings were comped to the city, the city only pays for the board and committee meetings that meet here. So that's a really critically important part of the contract that isn't on paper, but it is a verbal agreement with the city. So to that end, the, the museum does not owe us any money. Also, you know, it was the city's decision to cancel the meeting that day, more than just the fact that there was a lot of stuff in this room that was gonna be disruptive, it was a safety and security concern at that time. It was the city's decision, again. And if anybody should be giving us considerations, it's the county, shame on them for not only charging us an outrageous amount of money to begin with, but then two days before the meeting, coming back and adding almost another 50% onto the cost of the room. For four hours, we'd charged us $3,700. If we're only paying $4,200 for a month for all of our board and committee meetings here, that's ludicrous. And, and they gave us a room that was way larger than we really needed, could we have used a smaller room? Probably. I'm, I'm really concerned that, that it makes us look petty if we're gonna go after the museum for this money, it was not the museum's fault, and I'm not speaking as a board member of the museum, I'm speaking as a councilperson. I just think it makes us look petty, and, and I think we're, we're barking at the wrong people, I think we should be talking to the county, and maybe as a united body, we send a letter to the county and ask them for some compensation reimbursement. I, I just think it was, it was all handled the wrong way, and, you know, I, I feel bad for the museum that we weren't able to have our meetings here, it disrupted their service too. I just, you know, there's, there've been other reasons why we've had to postpone meetings or we had to change the timing of meetings and everything else, all of those are city decisions, they were not the museum's decisions. So I, I think we need to step back on this and, and try to be good stewards of, of the room that we are renting from them. Mark?
I think that's actually a, a good point, is, you know, the county charged us essentially 10 times what this would cost for a meeting.
Right.
And, and I, I get it, hey, short term, I mean, it's a whole different thing, I mean, you could expect to pay some higher amount, but 10 times?
But we're a fellow governing body.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
Melissa?
Mayor?
Bill, go ahead, I've spoken, go ahead.
No, I, I think you're right, I think we're onto something here, I think we ought to get with the county, I think they owe us big time, I mean, when their system went down during the hurricane and we took over all the calls, we didn't bill them, we did it because we worked together as a team. This should be a team effort now with the county, they shouldn't have been billing us. But now that we've gone this, down this slippery slope here, I, I don't think we should go after the money from the museum at all, but now the question is, will another shoe drop, will, will something happen again that we can't get in here? Do, do we even want to look now, maybe someplace else?
We, we have been told that that is not gonna happen again.
And I believe you, Mayor, I'm just saying that sometimes when I have a little trouble sleeping at night, that crosses my mind.
Well, that's why you got the email from Terry Ashley this morning, that was, she's, she called me last night, and she said, "If there ever is another situation, the PGIC A stands ready to be able to accommodate your meetings." I, I guess one other comment that I'll make before we go on is, is, you know, if it was anybody else in the city that disrupted one of our meetings, enough for it to be canceled, would we hold them responsible? I mean, it's the same scenario.
I would.
So, well, I don't, I don't agree with that.
I, um, a couple other points, I mean, obviously, we know where I stand on this. You, you had mentioned it was a security issue, it was a security issue, we're here to meet, and the landlord, or the person that we have a lease with did not, was not able to secure us to meet, which then forced us to cancel the meeting. If we didn't feel safe because whatever issue was going on inside here, then they did not provide a safe environment, an environment in which we could meet in. So I disagree entirely that we just decided to cancel this meeting. As far as this verbal, I know I've not been on council very long, but I have a problem with verbal agreements, if it's not a lease, it doesn't exist. And yes, I would definitely hold anybody responsible when it comes to, hey, the county did what the county did, and that, that could be a discussion for down the road, but at the end of the day, they're a business too, they saw a need, and they charged what they charged, I'm in business. It is what it is, and so I, I don't think that we should go back and look at the Event Center, yes, I think it was overpriced, but it is what it is. The problem is, the only reason why we were at the Event Center is because we could not meet here.
If I could just mention about the Convention Center, the county, I believe, will say that their fee for the Convention Center is 900 some dollars, and the contract operator of the Convention Center that provides all the facilities, manages it, provides the AV equipment, et cetera, was the remainder of the cost, so that it was not the county, it was their contract operator. I believe that would be their position.
And I'll also mention, in, in response to your concern, Melissa, I, there's nothing in a contract that says the museum needs to provide security for this organization. Nowhere in the contract does it say that. The city al- always has its own security onsite, as we do right now, for all of our meetings, it's not the museum's responsibility to provide security for us. Never has been, never will be, and that, that by itself is, speaks for itself. And, you know, and there's, there's a whole different thing that, you know, if, if there was a safety and security concern, there were, there were a lot of our police force here that day that worked with the city manager to make that decision, it was the city's decision. It's not the museum's decision or responsibility.
There was a decision because the, the, the problem was that we felt that if we met, because this other issue wasn't resolved, our meeting could have been disrupted, and we could have been asked to leave the building. So how can you conduct a meeting if, if that was on the table, and that was on the table?
The owner of the property was angry at the city that morning, that was what, what precipitated the whole thing. He knows bloody well that the city has a valid contract, he knows the Military Heritage Museum has a valid lease. That was never really an issue, however, he made it an issue while they were having discussions. And, and it just goes back to the same thing I've been saying, it's not the museum's fault, and I can't in good conscience go to the museum, first of all, it's gonna have to be a, a board of directors' decision at the museum level, and I will not vote, by the way, if that comes up, I will not vote at that meeting, and I am the chair, the president on the board of directors, I, I'm an unpaid volunteer, I will not vote on that if it comes before the board of directors, but I, I cannot in good conscience recommend that we move it forward.
Yeah, I, I agree, and I agree with Councilman Dryberg, I think this whole thing makes us look petty. Yeah, it was unfortunate, and it wasn't convenient, and it put a lot of us out, but at the end of the day, you know, $5,900, and it's not even really $5,900, because some of those meetings just didn't happen, they wouldn't have happened anyway, so I, I just say we drop it, I don't think it's worth pursuing, period, but if we want to pursue it, I think your suggestion to go towards the county is more appropriate.
We can send a letter and ask, I mean, that's the best we can do with, for the county.
I, I wouldn't do anything, but if we feel we need to do something, that would be, I think, an appropriate direction.
Mrs. Peterman, any comments?
As the first person here that day, I mean, it was a very upsetting situation, I don't see how we could have possibly gone on with our meeting, given the level of emotion that was going on that morning. I don't believe it's the museum's fault, and I think it's, it was just, it was an unfortunate situation, I, I viewed it as a mental health crisis, frankly, that was occurring, and I just, I don't think it's worth going after the museum, I really don't.
I'm also concerned that it will strain relationships with the museum, and, and I don't want to see that happen, it's a kind of a critical, important part of our city at this point, and certainly, we need to be here for a long time, for the rest of our meetings until the city hall is, is redone. So I, I would just not, I, I don't, in good conscience, I can't support.
I, I obviously won't make a motion, because we obviously know where this is gonna go, but again, I just want to go on record that I don't care who it was, it could have been anywhere. As a business person, we were not offered the meeting space that we had an agreement with, they did not provide the meeting space, and we have a fiduciary obligation to account for every penny that the, that the city spends, whether it be, and I don't think there's any relationship strained, I would hope that everybody would look at this from, it's a business decision, this is not anything personal with anybody. And I think that we have done a disservice by allowing us to spend money that we didn't have to spend.
Can I just add another comment? I would be in favor of having the board of directors of the museum consider the issue and then come back and tell us if they think there is something that should be done, but let that be their call.
I don't support that, sorry. I think, I think it just needs, if, if there's any, if there's any follow-up on this that needs to be done, I think it needs to be with the county and what their exorbitant fees were. So, okay, let's, let's take a vote. How many people support going to the Military Heritage Museum and asking for a, a partial refund?
Aye.
How many people support not doing so?
Aye.
Aye.
So, four to one, okay. Thank you, appreciate your comments, I really do, it's just one of those things we're just not gonna agree on, so, okay. All right, city clerk, you're up.
Karen Smith, city clerk, for the record, just some vacancies for boards and committees. The building board, we have one regular and one alternate seat. For code enforcement board, we have two alternates. The nominations for code enforcement board for the two regular seats will be brought back at the next meeting, so those folks have the opportunity to introduce themselves. Historic preservation advisory board, two alternates. I had said at the last meeting that I thought we had an applicant for one of those seats, however, she did submit an application, but not for that particular board, so we have no one for those alternates right now. And planning commission, we have two regular seats, and utility advisory board, we have one resignation, so we have one seat on that board. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
Again, thank you for your tolerance and waiting for everything to get completed that has been a result of Hurricane Ian, I know we're, you know, seven months into it, and we've had a lot of things going on, we still, again, as insurance money and material becomes available, contractors become less available, because the more people that have all this work to do, the less we can get for especially low bid government projects that we're waiting to complete. So we're still working on things, staff has been working diligently and overtime, and providing all the resources we can to get things completed, so it's just, it takes time, there was a wide scope of Ian, obviously Hurricane Charlie was more defined in duration and size than Ian was, so everyone's working everywhere right now, and Little Punta Gorda's not always at the top of everyone's list, but we're certainly moving forward with a lot of things. Our canal debris removal is nearing a close, our debris removal in the streets, of course, has been completed, we're working on our facilities now, and once we're trying to help everyone else with the facilities they've needed to, to mitigate, we're trying to get scopes out for things, we're still working on additional things at the, not only Bay Front Center, but Herald Court Center, our third floor, all of the different things that we need to have scoped, bid, contractors back in, constructed, all of that is in progress, we know that, you know, June's coming, and, you know, we hope we don't have a season like last year, so that we can continue to get things repaired and hardened. We're fortunate that we got another million one from a grant that staff had worked on for our pumping stations, so that we can harden them with some of our generators that are needed, because if you have 120 pumping stations and not near that many generators, and power's out for a week, it's kinda hard to move things around and keep everything flowing, so to speak. But we did get another million one there, we're still, I guess, in the running for five and a half million for our Septuagunt Azur project, which is certainly, you know, the beginning of a project that helps water quality in Charlotte Harbor, so we're fortunate to still be in the running for that, I hope that that comes through. Of course, you've seen the grants we've gotten from our Florida Department of Law Enforcement, from our Marine Advisory Committee, and the other grants that we're currently working on that we've already been awarded, so we have a lot going on, we're still accomplishing a lot, there's just a tremendous amount to do. So we appreciate your tolerance while we get it completed, and appreciate all the work that staff's putting into getting that done, and on top of it, we have a budget coming, so we're going to be bringing more and more information in on the budget, including our, our funding plan for our capital projects that we discussed last meeting, you know, what money is restricted, what money we're using for our capital projects plan, and where all that goes, so you'll be seeing a lot more information in the very near future on our fiscal situation as we move into fiscal '24, and we feel we're still in very good shape, and we're accomplishing a lot, and we're moving forward with infrastructure improvements, and we'll continue to help the city improve as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. City, uh, city attorney, sir?
Yes, I, I've been trying to come up with a better answer for Councilmember Peterman's questions regarding the difference between the pickleball committee and the Bay Front Center committee, and I could be wrong.
Bay Front's a better topic.
I, I could, I could be wrong about this, because, you know, my memory isn't that great, but seems to me that the, that the mission of the pickleball committee was to be fact-finding and come up with potential alternatives for the city. Karen, you shaking your head no?
See, I think that's what this group's doing too.
Well, the, well.
I was just gonna, I was actually gonna ask to make a couple of comments about the Bay Front Committee, and they, they were fact-finding, but they were not asked to make any kind of recommendation, or, they were just asked to present the facts.
Right, that's where, that's where I was going with that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, you know, they, they were fact-finding, and, and were not asked to make a recommendation, and there is an exception recognized in And there is an exception recognized in the sunshine law for committees that merely present facts. Whereas I, as the discussion developed regarding the Bayfront Center, I think that there was going to be a request for a recommendation, and that would then take it out of the fact-finding exception.
That makes sense.
Okay, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say. I think I'll sleep better tonight knowing that.
And then the other comments that I had about that committee is that I would ask that they have their meetings here where they can be recorded, just like all of our other, our board and committee meetings. And I will, once a decision has been made about the number, and they can have their first meeting, and then they can decide how often they're going to meet. And then we can talk about that with the museum and the availability of the theater.
Yeah.
And then the last thing, I just want to say that the city clerk's office is here to help in any way we can to facilitate that group. And of course, we'll be here to record the meetings and everything. Okay?
And, and once again, thank you for that. If for any reason they need to meet on a day when this facility is not available, we can always use the PGICA as a backup.
I did see Terry's email.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I have a few comments. First of all, for anyone who went to the Honor Flight reception last night, oh my gosh. Oh my gosh. It was tearjerker central. I, I've never seen so many people crying in my whole life. It was magnificent to see. I just want to say publicly, thank you to the Southwest Florida Honor Flight Organization. The Punta Gorda Airport, oh my gosh. Rock stars yesterday. They comped all the parking for anybody who was there for the, for the welcome home ceremony. They made everybody feel so welcome there. There was just people everywhere handing out flags and all kinds of free things. And it was just really fun. And also to Allegiant Airlines, my gosh. They did a phenomenal job getting our, our veterans up there and back. And it was just quite a spectacle to see. And there were barely any dry eyes. So I just wanted to call that out because I think it's really important that we acknowledge that. So again, upcoming events that you can, I'll put on your calendars if you, if you can be at, at these things. Tomorrow at noon, outside the city hall annex, is the National Day of Prayer Ceremony. Saturday at 9:00 AM is the Hibiscus Festival. I'll be doing a proclamation at that event as well. Conquistadors Landing is next Saturday, the 13th, at 1:00 PM at the Sheraton Four Points. And Memorial Day, there will be a ceremony at 10:00 AM in front of the Vietnam Wall. And my understanding is we're going to do a one-time exception to our city ordinance to allow that ceremony to take place. It is being organized by the Charlotte County Veterans Council. I've been in touch with Commissioner Deutsch about this and also with the city manager about it. It'll come on next, next council meeting agenda just to give the nod of approval on the part of the city to give a one-time exception for this special event. But that'll be 10:00 at the wall. And then at 11:30, there will be a Memorial Day ceremony here in this room. And all are welcome. And I would hope that council members can be here if your schedule permits. And Mr. Murray has already mentioned the, the state budget funds that are possibly coming to us. We have made it to the governor's desk list of budget items for the Septic to Sewer. It's quite a, quite a feat because we asked for five and a half million dollars. So if we make it through the governor's budget, it'll be a great thing to get us started on that project. It's going to be probably five times that to get it actually done. But it's, it's at least money to get started on engineering and design at this point. And that's all I have. Council member comments. Mrs. Peterman?
Nothing.
Ms. Lockhart?
Nothing.
And Mr. Dryberg?
Mr. Ritchie has been coming here before us for a number of times, asking us to go along with Charlotte County and their opposition to Mosaic. And I think we need to get with Charlotte County, get the wording for the letter. And we do that as a body from the Punta Gorda City Council. Because we are a water community. The harbor is important to us. And I think we need to stand with Charlotte County on this issue.
Are we not covered under Charlotte County's letter as part of the county? Or do we need a separate letter? That's my issue with it.
Well, I don't think that there's any requirement that there be a separate letter. I, I think it's just a question as to whether or not the city council wants to stand in a position separate and apart from the county on the issue.
I think we need the letter.
Okay. Mr. Karski?
No comments?
Okay. Well, we can look into that to see if the county's letter for that, that program is something that we need to mirror as a city, or if we fall under their, there are a lot of things that we, we kind of fall under their, their guise, like, you know, the leash law, for instance. We, we follow the county's rules about the leash law. So there may be other, other things that are the same. But we'll look into it. Okay. There being no further business, we are adjourned.